Everybody's in the active session. Health and Human Services, Paul and Gary. And thank you all for your patience today. We really appreciate that. We have five bills that are going to be heard at the same time. Those include LD 5, 266, 726, 766, and 1258. So if you have testimony on any of those, those are the bills that are under consideration. And we're going to hear from the sponsors. I think we have most of them in the room. If not, if another sponsor comes in, we are going to let that sponsor come forward and present their bills. And we're going to begin, because he got here first and was standing at the podium, with Senator Savvyell's bill, number 726. So we'll begin with 726. Welcome, Senator.
Welcome. Good afternoon, this side of the town. It's a pleasure to be here. They introduce 726. Just looking at the fiscal note, it's probably dead on arrival for $350,550. But I know Senator Haskell will write a personal check to make that happen. Basically, what this bill does, and I have an amendment that I'll offer, I don't have 10 copies of it, but we will get that to you, that moves some of these poundage numbers up, but this basically offers the opportunity for a primary caregiver to transfer, give compensation from two to 10 pounds of excess material. It requires or allows for inspections if necessary. It allows for record-keeping and a few other things. And there are better experts than I will testify, but the bottom line to me is if you're going to provide medicine, then you should be, have some regulations put on top of you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. We will be awaiting your amendment. Your amendment, which is going along very shortly. That will have short help for folks. Are there any questions, Representative Savvyell?
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you. And now I'm looking for any of the other sponsors of the other bills. Chip, thank you very much. Welcome.
Shall I begin?
Yes, go right ahead. Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon, Senator Brackey, Representative Vittine, and distinguished members of the Joint Standing Committee on Health and Human Services. I am Lydia Bloom, and I represent the coastal part of the town of York. Shortly after my election, I approached my municipal office to inquire about any problems that they needed help in resolving. The York Police shared with me that they had encountered difficulty in obtaining answers to their inquiries to the Department of Health and Human Services about the legitimacy of certain marijuana cultivation operations in York. LD 266 was a proposal to deal with that problem. However, my research shows that Maine law already allows the Department of Health and Human Services to provide law enforcement officers with information as to whether a person is a registered patient or caregiver. Specifically, in that Act, the Main Medical Use of Marijuana Act specifies that the department shall verify to law enforcement personnel whether a registry identification card is valid without disclosing more information than is reasonably necessary to verify the authenticity of the registry identification card. So this also specifies that the records maintained by the department that identify these primary caregivers may be disclosed to a law enforcement official for verification purposes. The Department of Health and Human Services has more than adequate resources to respond to law enforcement in a more timely way. The medical marijuana program is self-funded by registration fees paid by dispensaries and caregivers. This funding should be adequate to cover the cost of administering the program and responding to law enforcement requests in a timely manner. I'm concerned about the repeated complaints from law enforcement that the department has not responded to inquiries about registered caregivers. Responses to these requests should be immediate or within 24 hours and should not take days or weeks. I respectfully request that the committee direct the department through this legislation, if necessary, or a formal letter, to respond to any and all legitimate law enforcement inquiries about the status of a registered patient or caregiver within a 24-hour period. My own York Chief of Police is here, and he is going to be addressing his concerns directly in his testimony. And I think it will find him very informative on this matter.
Thank you very much.
And I'm happy to respond to any questions at this time.
Thank you very much, Representative Savvyell. Are there any questions, Representative Savvyell? Seeing none, we thank you for your testimony. You are in for 266. So, Cory?
Welcome. Two outside four a.m. In that list. Just because he's the one I saw. Very busy. That'll be five. Yeah, she's there. Five, 266. Morning. Let me see. So Senator Brackey is not here. We're just under fifteen. Hello. Members of the Health and Human Services Committee. Representative Patrick Corry, and I serve part of Wyndham. Blake, I'd read you the path, 766. An act require medical marijuana primary caregiver cultivating in a residential building to obtain an electrical permit. Indormal marijuana cultivation isn't without risk, especially when conducted in a residential building that wasn't designed or initially inspected for commercial growing activities. Keep in mind that Maine has the fifth oldest housing stock in the nation with almost 30% built prior to 1940. One adverse condition is that older homes may have outdated electrical and safety systems. An indoor grow can have a variety of high-load electrical devices in play, including lights, fans, air conditioners, water pumps, dependent on methods employed. Typically, a bedroom has one 15-amp circuit. Imagine a 1,000-watt metal halide, high-pressure sodium light draws about 10 amps. Just one of these lights plugged into a wall, it brings you close to maxing out the circuit for that room. When you max out the circuit, there are two possible outcomes. One, if your circuit breaker is in good working order, it shuts down, similar to what happens when I turn on the Keurig toaster at the same time in my kitchen. Two, should your circuit not be working properly, the wiring may heat up, catch fire, or short out. A qualifying patient may only have six mature plants cultivated for his or her medical use. A caregiver could cultivate up to five patients, which could result in as many as 30 mature plants. There are a variety of cultivation methods out there, but there seems to be some consensus that four to eight plants can be grown under each light, dependent on plant size, and desired by yield. I've even heard estimates as low as one to two plants. In addition to these mature plants, other plant stock includes some juvenile, some in juvenile states. An easy way to think about this is that light is food for plants. More intense surrounding light results in larger plants, fatter buds, and higher yields. The closer you put the plants together, the less likely the light is able to penetrate the canopy, given the number of mature plants that can be grown per patient. I imagine that a caregiver would want to keep the yield as high as possible. If one 1,000-watt light brings us close to maxing out a circuit, it isn't likely adequate for a grow much larger than one patient unless the cultivator is growing in multiple rooms or has a room wired for more than one 15-amp circuit. There's a chance that extension cords could be in use. I believe that the likelihood of extension cords being used would increase if the cultivator rents or does not own the property. Extension cords come in a variety of lengths and gauges, that's businesses, each suitable for different tasks. Every extra foot of cord increases heat and resistance when attached to high-load electrical devices, which could result in fires. As a matter of fact, OSHA recognizes that overloaded, unapproved extension cords can present serious fire safety hazards. Moreover, their guidelines state that extension cords are for temporary uses only. In most commercial facilities, you won't even find the use of any extension cords at all. This bill does not seek to place unnecessary burdens on anyone with a debilitating medical condition growing marijuana on their own. Rather, its intent is to make commercial cultivation, single-family, multifamily residential dwellings safer. We're aware that there are caretakers who have taken these steps with increased yields and safety in mind. This won't be a burden for them, as they've chosen to do this work already, having an electrical person come in and install a panel for, you know, the growth that they're having. There have already been a couple of fires in Maine this year caused by marijuana cultivation and faulty electrical plans and systems. I've included those articles with my testimony. These weren't necessarily ones that were medical marijuana caregiver grows, but they are, you know, examples of people growing marijuana and overloading circuits or overloading extension cords. I've learned that we may want to amend this bill to require caregivers and/or dispensaries when making their initial application through DHHS to demonstrate compliance with 32 MRSA 1102B. Current statute requires no electrical equipment be installed or altered without obtaining a permit from the electrician's examining board. Compliance could be demonstrated through proof of a permit, and that the process could be created through routine technical workmaking at DHHS after informal consultation with the electrician's board. There are a couple of options for how to best aid service in the statute. I have faith that this committee is capable of recognizing the issue at hand, coming up with the best statutory way to protect Maine's families and firefighters from life loss, injury, and property damage. I'll be here for the work session, and I'm open to answering any questions you may have today.
Thank you very much, Representative Corry. Are there any questions from the committee further up? Seeing none, you're off the call.
Thank you.
Is that a question? No, it doesn't affect one. These are questions from the committee. If you have questions that you believe should be a part of the discussion, why don't you come up and testify? Please say, so you folks make sure you ask this question or get this piece of information as the way you do it. Representative Russell? Welcome back.
You guys will never want to see me again. Oh, wow. There we go. I am impressed with your resilience today. Senator Haskell, esteemed members of the HHS Committee, again, my name is Diane Russell. I still represent District 39, which continues to be the good people in Monja Hill, downtown Portland, and the beautiful Casco Bay Islands. I am here to introduce LD 5, an act to remove the limit on the number of patients a primary caregiver may provide for under the medical marijuana law. I believe that Representative Anderson has a similar bill, if I'm not mistaken. This next bill is considered remarkably controversial, but if you understand the basics of it, I think you'll find it's common sense. Under the current Medical Marijuana Act, caregivers can grow up to six plants per patient, and they are allowed five patients in addition to themselves. This means that the maximum limit on flowering plants is 36. Under this bill, the maximum flower and plant limit will remain at 36. Caregivers will continue to be allowed to grow the same number of plants. The difference is that if they have the talent, as many do, of growing remarkably fruitful plants, the legal means by which to sell that excess product happens to be limited. Let me ask you, if you had a significant excess of a highly sought-out, rather expensive product, what would you do with it? One dedicated caregiver I know turns her excess into medical edibles that she gives to her patients. Some caregivers are able to sell their excess product to the dispensaries. However, there still remains a significant amount of excess medication. I would hope that this excess is not being diverted into the black market, because that would violate both the letter and the spirit of the Medical Marijuana Act, not to mention the eight guidelines laid out by the Department of Justice. Violating that last part could end the entire program. It also would create an unlevel playing field and unfair competition for caregivers who are playing by the rules. If folks are doing this, they should be removed from the Medical Marijuana Act, and I strongly support regulations that will constructively protect this needed program for Maine. However, there's a more effective way to divert, deter diversion while also increasing access for patients. By removing the patient limit and keeping the plant limit, caregivers will be able to legally sell their excess product to patients. This rewards smart botany, and I imagine there are some very successful botanists in the room, and growing practices, while also increasing the availability of legally-available medicine for patients, which could ultimately reduce the cost of that medicine for those patients, supply and demand. Again, let me emphasize that the amount of plants will remain the same. We are simply providing greater access to customers, increasing the viability of sales for caregivers. This should not be implemented without also ensuring proper oversight and enforcement of the program to, quote, "weave out the bad apples," who do exist and who genuinely threaten the entire system. Let's allow folks who already play by the rules to do what they do best, which is to grow great medicine and help Maine patients. Thank you, and I will be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you very much, Representative Russell. Are there any questions, Senator?
Thank you. I don't get it.
You don't get it?
So if I'm a caregiver and I currently can have, what is it, six plants for five patients, now I can have 36?
Thirty.
Thirty. If you're yourself, if you're also, if you are also a patient, you can also grow for yourself, so you can have a maximum of 36.
So that caregiver can grow 36 plants?
Flowering plants.
Currently, under the bill...
You'd still be able to do that?
Bill also has 36.
The difference is you would remove the patient cap.
So no cap at all, so you've got 36 plants for 36 patients if you are.
The chances are that there will not be 5,000 patients, unless you're very good at what you do. But there are folks, I can't grow a tomato plant to save my life, but there are some people who can grow tomato plants with lots of big tomatoes. Sometimes the small tomatoes work well, too. The same applies in the medical marijuana market. There are some remarkably creative botanists in the room who can create on one plant enough medicine to last a patient for the entire year. So why should they be able to not sell the other five plants simply because they're able to grow that amount? Of course, you don't know how much you're going to be able to grow until harvest season, so you start your six plants, and then you end up at the end of the year with a lot more excess, and what do you do with that?
Sure, okay, so it's the yield per plant. I thought that each plant was going to have the same yield per, so that's worth it.
I would not, I think I've seen one marijuana plant in my entire life. Everyone in the room will probably laugh at that inherently, not out loud, because that might be wrong. But there are folks in the room who can grow large petite plants, if I got that right, and then there are smaller plants. It also depends on the medicine, the type of medicine that you're trying to grow. Some plants are huge with a lot of yield, and some plants are smaller and more petite, like me, so...
Thank you. Are there any additional questions from Representative Russell? Hearing none, I'm ready. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thanks to all the folks that came to turn out today for these important bills. The medical marijuana program continues to be a very, very important program for patients all across the state and a model for places all across the country, and I commend folks for turning out to protect it, to tweak it, and to make it better.
And I'm going to ask Representative Anderson, if she would present her bill, the last in the series of five, LD 5, at the same time.
Thank you for you. Thank you for the change.
This would be 1258.
Well, I will acknowledge our Senator Brackey and Representative Vittine in absentia, and then the rest of the distinguished members of the Health and Human Services Committee. It is my pleasure to come before you and present LD 1258, an act amendment, Main Medical Use of Marijuana Act, with regard to good business practices. LD 1258 addresses four issues with current policy. One, as we just heard from the representative from Portland, Representative Russell, caregivers who are designated to cultivate medical marijuana for patients under current law are limited to five patients and may cultivate up to six mature plants for each. Other plants in different stages of development are not counted in that number of six, so in order to ensure an uninterrupted supply cycle for a particular patient. One of the difficulties faced with these limitations is, depending on how prolific a particular plant may be, a caregiver may find themselves with excess beyond what they are currently allowed to process, making it necessary to either destroy the product or give it away for free. LD 1258 would allow caregiver to transfer excess prepared marijuana to a qualifying patient for reasonable compensation. While this component may increase the number of patients served by a caregiver, I think it's very important to note that it does not increase the number of plants, excuse me, over what is currently in statute. It will remain at the top threshold of 30 plants, and that in itself, by design, will obviously cap the number of individuals that a caregiver could serve. Number two, currently caregivers are allowed one employee. During times when plant harvest is at its peak, extra hands may be needed to help process these plants. Also, marijuana cultivation is not a nine-to-five, five-day-a-week job. There are times when the primary caregiver may need to rely on others to tend the crop in their absence, and the allowance for flexibility in hiring or contracting help someone who has also been vetted by the department as a caregiver to help them out is important. For over years, I've watched caregivers struggle for recognition as a legitimate business. I've been working with this program, and many of the people standing behind me on this legislation in the previous two sessions, and it's a pleasure to do so here as well. These small businesses have cropped up all over the state, injecting much-needed revenue into our economy. Hardware stores, building supplies, garden suppliers, hydroponic supply stores have all benefited from the needs of caregivers cultivating marijuana for patients. Many grow in the area. Caregivers have continually pushed back against overregulation, much of that is because some of the regulation being proposed. Because they are growing marijuana, albeit legally under Maine state law, there is always the federal shadow, and unfortunately, that shadow casts an unfair assumption that perhaps there isn't a legitimacy for what they're doing. For the vast majority, that just isn't true. They are legitimate. They work very hard to educate and serve the public in a very positive way. When approached by advocates and caregivers to again sponsor a bill for them, these next two components of the bill were reasonable measures of accountability for their business that they came forth with, and I think we need to have an open discussion about these. One, it would allow the DHHS to make onsite assessments of registered primary caregivers who cultivate for three or more patients at a time, to ensure compliance with the medical marijuana statute with 24 hours' notice. The language in this bill to authorize onsite assessments of registered caregivers was previously part of Maine's medical marijuana laws amended in 2010. Authorization for the DHHS to do inspections of registered caregivers was removed the following year, leaving the department without a way to investigate a complaint against a caregiver. And I suppose I'm responsible for that one, right, Mr. Albert? Anyways, in 2014, the DHHS introduced LD 1739, and that included language authorizing the department to conduct complaint investigations, but without the needed details on how the investigations would take place. The bill was amended by the DHHS Committee, removing authorization for complaint investigations until a structure was put in place, a structure. The legislation which was enacted in August mandated the department put together a plan on how to conduct complaint investigation. Section 1622 MRSA 2430A specifies, "The Department of Health and Human Service shall develop a frame for processing, documenting, and investigating complaints concerning the implementation of the Medical Use of Marijuana Act. The department shall review mechanisms for processing, documenting, and investigating complaints, and shall report its recommendations to the Joint Standing Committee of the Legislature Having Jurisdiction Over Health and Human Services Matters by December 1, 2014. The department shall include in its report whether enacting new laws or authorizing new laws, either routine technical or major substantive, as required to implement the recommendations of the department." At this time, there is no legislation or rules allowing onsite inspection of caregivers. However, in March 2015, the DHHS implemented a caregiver complaint investigation program, effectively doing onsite assessments, but without the clear guidelines in law or rule. In order for caregivers to have consistency in knowing what is expected, to operate their business in compliance with the law, clear guidelines for how inspections and investigations are conducted need to be put in statute and rule, as they are for other businesses. Understate licensure, the department is allowed to inspect all other licensed entities, and it seems reasonable that a caregiver grow sites have that same expectations, as long as they're a clear process, unless some rules apply. Finally, LD 1258 requires that a registered primary caregiver or registered dispensary that receives compensation from a qualifying patient for costs associated with cultivating and providing marijuana be required to collect and remit sales tax. Under current law, marijuana is specifically excluded from the sales tax exemption or medications. Here's where it gets a little tricky, though, and I think this is where we may actually need to address our colleagues on another committee, because I'm always trying to be very sensitive about stepping on committees of jurisdiction, and taxation is really not our area of jurisdiction. But there's a little problem in here with regard to the fact that because there's ambiguity about whether they're actually selling a product or whether providing a service. And some caregivers have been advised by their accountants that they should collect the sales tax and remit it, while others are being advised that the sale is prohibited, and they're actually just providing a service because of federal law. So there needs to be a real clarity on what is it? Are we providing a service, or are we selling a product? Okay? And so overall, Maine's medical marijuana program is working well and providing many of our citizens with an alternative way to treat their condition when either standard pharmaceutical fails, or they desire a more natural method of treatment. From discussions with Mr. Albert while he was the head of DLRAS, "I know it is still not perfect or without some difficulties. However, I feel it's important to reiterate that the vast majority of caregivers are operating within the law and seek legitimacy as responsible small business owners. Unfortunately, they are small business owners, help and check." I hope you will consider all four components of this bill carefully and consider them together. It's important to remember that caregivers have come forward, have come forward asking for small steps toward growth by allowing caregivers to have more patients, yet will still be limited to the amount they can serve with a patient with a 30-plant limit, allowing for a little extra help, to give someone a temporary job they may not otherwise have, and also a desire for legitimacy with the allowance of the onsite compliance inspections, as long as it's set out, you know, what the expectations are, and an open acquiescence that sales tax should be collected and remitted by caregivers, pending clarification on are they actually selling a product or are they providing a service. So I urge you to support this bill and all four of the changes, and I hope we can have some real open discussion and dialogue on the benefits of all of these within, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may possibly have.
Thank you very much, Representative Anderson. I would just note that section page two didn't seem to appear here.
Okay. Well, we'll have to make sure that you have...
We may need to have the second page, so that we're sure we have all of that information, although we're all listening, Captain.
I will do that.
Are there any questions for Representative Anderson?
Thank you. Good afternoon. Can you just tell me, when you say caregivers are vetted by the department, what do they have to go through, actually, to try and figure it out?
Caregivers have to apply to the department. The department conducts a background check on them, which the caregivers also pay for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Thank you. I have some questions that I think I know the answer to, but I just want to be sure.
Never ask a question you do not know the answer to.
No, we're going to...
Go.
So if I were a caregiver and I had, say, one patient and grew six plants for them, in a period of time where I grew those plants, I did the work, and I grew the six plants, that person just decided, hey, I'm leaving. As the caregiver, am I required to wash that down the toilet and just run?
You have a couple of options at this time. One, okay, if you have another patient that signs right on with you, those plants could probably transfer to them, okay? Number two, you can give it away. Or number three, you can sell a certain amount to a dispensary, or you have to destroy it.
So you could give it away to a patient? To a patient. To a patient.
Yeah, without compensation.
Without compensation. Any additional questions?
Thank you. I have some questions that I think I know the answer to, but I just wanted to be sure.
Never ask a question you do not know the answer to.
I'm not a...
Go.
So, if I was a caregiver and I had, say, one patient, I grew six plants for that in a period of timeline where I grew those plants, I did the work, and I grew the six plants, and that person just decided, hey, I'm... As the caregiver, am I required to flush that down the toilet and destroy it?
You have a couple of options at this time. One, okay, if you have another patient that signs right on with you, those plants could probably transfer to them, okay? Number two, you can give it away. Or number three, you can sell a certain amount to a dispensary, or you have to destroy it.
So you could give it away to a patient?
To a patient.
To a patient.
Yeah, without compensation.
Without compensation, but this would allow you to sell it.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, Representative Sandersen. That takes us through the prime sponsors on those bills. The next thing I'll ask is, is there any co-sponsors who are in the room who want to speak on any of those five bills? And seeing none, I'm going to ask for those people who are going to be speaking in support, and I believe there were some specific folks who were recognized by their sponsor, and I'd like to give you the opportunity to come forward and support the bill. And this would be any of the five bills, LD 5, 266, 726, 766, and 1258. It'd be very helpful if, when you stepped up, you would let us know which bills it was that you were speaking to. That would help us to keep that straight. And as folks who have been in the room all morning know, we will be running a clock. That is to make sure that with the number of people here, if we gave everybody a half an hour, we would be here until Thursday. So we will be running a clock. I won't be terribly drunk with it, but if you get to four minutes, I'm going to ask you for a clarifying wrap-up sentence. Welcome.
Thank you, Senator Haskell, and members of the committee. My name is Doug Bracy. I'm president of Town York and Police Chief in York. I'm also here representing the Maine Chiefs of Police today in the matter of LD 266. And as you're seeing, I've given you a lot of information. I'm going to encapsulate that. It's about seven pages of testimony. Many of these are instances which I will try to just touch on that have been brought to me by other chiefs, as well as the experiences I've had in New York with the oversight available through DHHS. I want to first clarify by saying that when we call DHHS, we do get responses, and I can't say that the employees are not being responsive, but the process definitely is problematic at best. The ability for us to be able to gather information on caregivers is very cumbersome, if not impossible. Just to give you the example, in New York, we have what I would call a cooperative. We have about nine caregivers now that are operating over a warehouse in New York that unfortunately is next to a subdivision. I've probably, in the vicinity of 60, 65 complaints now, I've had prominent residents with that subdivision, everything from dangerous driving on the private road that goes into the facility to aggressive dogs, many of the caregivers actually have disprotection dogs with them, to hypodermic needles they found on their property, to different types of harassment. They've noted vehicles from multiple states up and down the eastern seaboard going into the facility, much of the traffic's from 10:00 until 2:00 AM to 4:00 AM in the morning. As the police chief in the town, I've been tasked with trying to investigate all of these different complaints and respond to them. One of the biggest problems is I have yet to be able to talk to all of the caregivers or even identify all of them. The way the system works is if we have a name, then they'll verify if the caregiver is a caregiver or not. In this case, many of them don't. In one actual instance, we've only had two where I would say incidences. We had one, one of the caregivers was charged with reckless driving, leaving the property in an accident, and was charged for that. We have another caregiver that was arrested in an undercover operation, not at the facility, but in the position of selling marijuana, and that information was notified to DHHS and the license was taken away. But I guess what I'm here today on the part of the chiefs is really two things. We need to clean the process up. I think I listened to Senator, excuse me, Representative Russell. She brings up a good point. There are multitudes of caregivers in this state, and most of them are operating legally. The problem we are having is to get at those that are not. And having the information available, like in this case, I just had the names and the phone numbers, so I could at least call these people and get them together, it would be part of it. As you'll see, this warehouse, they have video surveillance, they have a gate going in. When we respond to complaints and alarms, many times nobody's even come up to the door. So we don't know if something illegal's going on inside, something illegal, something bad even to them. When I talked to the chiefs, the press statement sent this out to see whether they would allow me to come to speak on their behalf. Their concerns are, as mine, that it isn't just this one situation. We're confronted with caregivers, many times we get calls from citizens, they see something suspicious, something unusual going on in the neighboring fifth home. We institute an investigation, and in the criminal process, we have to develop probable cause. So we go through that whole process only to find out that this is illegal, this person was legal and doing what they're supposed to and able to do by law. So in some senses, a lot of these cases that we investigate are a complete waste of time for us. If we were able to access that list, it would, you know, give us the ability to be able to work with them, work with the residents to explain, you know, number one, if it's a legal operation, we confirm that, and, you know, we go on from there. The other thing is, is many times, you know, we have vehicle stops, we have cases where we've gone to alarms of businesses and been met with people, you know, armed. Understand that the caregivers, you know, are concerned about their own safety. We've seen, I think it's a mention I passed out, whether it's in our state or states around us, Colorado or California, we're seeing more robberies and, you know, home invasions and things like that that have to do, obviously, with the safety of caregivers. What we're looking for, I think, is to somehow work with caregivers and DHHS to make the system more transparent. I understand them not wanting their name spread across the public landscape, but on the other hand, I think that is for us to serve them and serve the people in our communities, that we need to be able to have more information and have a process in place of how we deal with those who don't say.
Thank you very much, Chief. You did a good job of reading my eye, but before you leave the podium, I want to ask if the committee has any questions for you. Representative Burstein has a question.
Thank you.
Will you just wait for that question? Representative Burstein.
Do you ever foresee a situation where maybe the caregivers could come to you versus you going to the caregivers so they can identify themselves, or do you think that they might have some hesitancy from, like, old beliefs and different accounts?
I would agree. I mean, I think in some cases, there is a lack...